This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to welcome everybody to our February 27th, 2025 Landers County Commissioners Meeting. All times on this agenda are approximate. Consideration of items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter not occurring on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until that matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioners Board meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation which is pursuant to NRS 2410153B2. Just so it's a matter of record, we did have a litigation meeting this morning prior to the meeting starting, and it was for union labor negotiations. So I'll call this meeting to order. Mike, would you please end the speech for this one?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. Landers County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. At this time, we'll go into commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended, and Dee, we'll start with you today.
Okay, I attended Convention of Jurism. It was very short. There wasn't a lot accomplished there. I did ask about the grants because that was something we had discussed before, and they suggest these do still have a grant program. It's just that they haven't had anybody that has actually applied for any in a while, and we should be encouraging people to go in and do the grants with them. So they had like just three or four last year. That was it. So.
Are they still abstaining for advertising only?
Pretty much, yeah. But I asked Paula to send me a copy of what their grant rules and stuff were because I hadn't done any grant work with Convention of Jurism for about 10 years, and I'm still waiting for that. So when I get that, if you want to see it, I'll give you a copy of it also. And then I attended NACO, and one of the big things we talked about was all of the legislative stuff that's coming up and what NACO is supporting. I sent Bert and Sean a list. I wasn't sure if I could share it with you guys or not, but if you're interested, have Bert and Sean share it with you. And it's a breakdown of all the different things that are going on. There are quite a few things on that legislative that will affect Lander County, a lot of the water rights and things like that. So it's something you guys should try to keep an eye on and see what's going on. And if there's something that we feel really strongly about, we can contact NACO, and they will support it for us. I don't know. Who is our person that's representing Lander County? Bert?
We'd go through events for that.
You go through events? Okay. And then also, there was a thing about the liquor licenses, the state taking that over. Robert, I don't know if you knew that or not?
I've read that in the area.
Okay, but they're not supporting it. They're trying to strike it down, but I thought that was really interesting because right now each county does their own liquor licenses.
Yeah, I'd be one. We probably want to stay.
Yeah, and we don't want the state to take that over. So anyway, that's about it.
Thanks, Dee. Alicia?
So we had the FCC meeting. That was actually pretty quick as well. And then yesterday, I attended the SSR Mining Community Liaison Meeting. That's basically where community leaders are updated on, and SSR Mining updated on a few things. They are, I don't know if a lot of you know, but they purchased Buffalo Valley and I believe Trenton Canyon, and so they're working on permitting there. So, and I think they're looking, I think they said 2029 is when they'd start actually mining that.
Thank you.
I attended the Humboldt River Water Authority, had my first meeting there. We voted in a few, our chair and vice chair. We did have a few new members, like I said, including myself. The board approved RCI to assist in implementing voluntary water rights retirement program, taking certain areas offline for long periods of time to help them get rebuilt back up. There are several bills right now in legislation. I don't know where those ended up as far as a buyback program. As I start to know a little bit more about that, I'll be able to report a little more. And one of the things is our water supply and snowpack is a little bit less than it was the last couple of years. Nothing to really be worried about, but it was noted that our snowpack and our precipitation's been a little bit lower, but we've seen that here as well.
All right, at this time, we'll move into staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars.
There are a variety pack of BDRs and AVs, which are assembly bills and your builder app requests. So if you guys hear of anything or see anything, please let me know. One that I probably would like to send a letter of support in would be AV 100, and that's just a proposal to keep some of the funds in the aviation fund year after year as opposed to every year them falling back into the state's general fund. And that would probably be in support of Oco County and the fan, trying to get that Flight Alliance of Northern Nevada, helping us get some commercial air service into Northern Nevada. So that's something that I would like to send a letter of support in if the commission's good with that. Other than that, we've been working on budget and union negotiations, so we'll just keep everything else on the agenda. I don't have much more to update on.
Okay, thank you, Bert. This time, we'll move into public comment for non-agenda items only. Do we have any public comment? Okay. During nine, we'll move into our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. One, approval of February 27th, 2025 Agenda Notice. Two, approval of January 23rd, 2025 Meeting Minutes. Three, approval of February 13th, 2025 Meeting Minutes. And four, approval of payroll change requests. So it looks like the two items that we will need a motion on will be one and two.
We'll make a motion that we approve the February 27th, 2025 Agenda Notice and that we approve the January 23rd, 2025 Meeting Minutes.
Motion. Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we'll move into 1.1 for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, payment of bills. We'll need to pull check number 227081, 227025, 227048, and 211093. So I'll have a motion on the remainder of the bills. Okay, we have a motion and a second? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, and then I'll make a motion that we approve 227025 and 227048. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Okay, and then I'll make a motion that we approve 211093. Is there a second? Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Commissioner President, please just let everybody know why you're abstaining.
Yes, one is for my business and one is for sober seniors, which I'm on that board.
And Dee, did you say you abstained then?
I abstain, yes. All that check is to me.
Okay, and then we have an outstanding check, 227081.
I motion to approve check 227081.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and aye abstain is made to my employer. All right, we'll move into 1.2 for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, the United We Stand Grant for the Local Emergency Planning Commission, LEPCE, for fiscal year 2526 in a fully reimbursed amount of $32,000. Morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Michelle Young. I am the current Chairperson for LEPCE. So the United We Stand Grant, my understanding, it's been some years since we applied for this one, but we had some requests from our partners for LEPCE for equipment that we just couldn't all fit into the CERT grant.
Commissioner, have any questions on it? We, I didn't see a copy of the actual grant in our pack. Did we not get that?
So the grant application for the United We Stand Grant is not due until, I believe, April something. I gave you guys a letter of the dates the applications were due. As far as I know, Holly hasn't finished the applications yet, and when they do, I will bring them into the county.
Okay, but we're approving the grant before we see the grant? Is that what you're saying?
Um, yeah, I need you, I'm asking you guys to approve us to go after the grant.
Is that what the item reads?
Yes, so that's how it reads, but that could be the stipulation.
Okay, all right.
So that grant's due April 25th, I think is what.
I believe that's correct, too.
All righty, any other questions on it? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
We'll make a motion that we approve the United We Stand Grant, the going after the United We Stand Grant for the LEPCE group for the fiscal year 2526 in a fully reimbursed amount of $32,000.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll go to 1.3 for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, the State of Nevada Emergency Response Commission CERT grant for the Local Emergency Planning Commission, LEPCE, for fiscal year 2526 in a fully reimbursed amount of $36,000.
This is the grant that we have been applying for since I became the LEPCE Chair in 2021. Again, this chair, and it is, we're full. We are pushing the limit of the $36,000 for the grant. So we have some big plans ahead for some of our partners with this chair, and I'm just asking you guys to approve us to go after this grant, and I believe the deadline is March 25th.
Does the commission have any questions?
Again, there's no copy of the grant. Holly hasn't finished writing the grant for this yet. I gave you guys the letter of when the deadlines were due. If you would like to see the spreadsheet of the equipment that they're asking for, I can bring that in.
Well, I think, I think where we're at, and we let administration know that anytime we're approving grants, we'd like to physically see the grant because sometimes there's strings attached to grants. I just, we want to do our diligence before we actually approve, so.
And we might revisit that last item. I apologize, but maybe we can, we can approve that contingent upon the revisiting of this and, and, you know, seeing the stipulations of the grant. A lot of times is what we're asking for here, I think, is that we budget these funds so we can pay it out, and then they reimburse us after we've, after we've paid it. So it's just strictly the reimbursement, but I think that to stay compliant with kind of the direction you guys have given us, that we'd like to see these, see these grants for final approval once they've been applied for and received.
Right, and the list of equipment, et cetera, what you're asking for in the grants.
So Commissioners, I can do that. Once we apply for the grant, I have to bring the award letters in for your approval before anything is done. I'm not sure you guys have to sign it or not. I don't remember. But this just gives us your approval to apply for the grants? Absolutely, and then I will bring you all the documentation that you ask for.
Okay, so maybe we need to change this wording here in our approval for application instead of for reimbursement.
Because the way this is being approved, it is for, for the reimbursement and not for the application. And then on the next item, once this comes back, maybe it could be for the reimbursement of.
Okay, so do, so how do we want to address that since?
I think just changing the, the motion to approve it for the application of the grant in the amount of $32,000, and then when we bring this item back before you, it will be for the reimbursement.
Okay, so I'll hear a motion on 1.3.
We'll make a motion that we approve the State of Nevada Emergency Response Commission grant for the LEPCE group for the fiscal year 2526 for an application amount of $36,000.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect, we're gonna go back and open 1.2, and we'll have a different motion on that. So is there a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the CERT.
I think that you need to retract or modify your previous motion. That way, we don't have two motions on the same item and bill.
Gotcha, so we're going to be opening it back up for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, the United We Stand Grant for the Local Emergency Planning Commission, LEPCE, for fiscal year 2526 in a fully reimbursed amount of $32,000. We'll be opening it for purposes of modifying the motion. So, and.
Okay, I can do it again. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the United We Stand Grant for the LEPCE group for fiscal year 2526 for an application amount of $32,000.
Okay, is there a second? Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, there we go.
That's just a modification of the previous motion.
Yes. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move to 1.4 for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, our agenda justice court, Justice of the Peace Salary Increase. Do we have our G P here? So I don't, I see.
Didn't the commission set this pay?
At last year's meeting, yeah, for a startup. I don't know if he thought he was gonna get the same amount that Denise gets after 32 years of service or, or what, but I think that when he applied, when he put in for the, he should have been aware of what the amount was. And $70,000 is pretty good money.
So basically, that's what we're here to discuss is, is, and I'm trying to look, does he specify the amount that he's asking for?
No.
That's what I was wondering, because I don't see how much, you know, number one, how much he's making. If, maybe I'd look past that or how much he's looking for.
Yeah, we have ours set at 71.
So every year on December before the election year, this board is required to set the justice salaries. We did that, and you guys put it at all the other elected official salaries, which is at $71,316.
Right, and then I might note, I did do a comparison on, I had Winamaka, the Justice of the Peace that just left the office, he was making $85,553, but he'd served in that seat since 2019. So we're paying our new Justice of the Peace, who's new to the bench, and we've got him at an entry salary of whatever it was, $71,000 or some change, so.
$71,361.
Yeah, so if there's no more discussion, I will hear a motion to approve or disapprove.
I motion that we disapprove the raise and leave him at the base salary of $71,361.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move into 1.5 for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, the bid ward for the Lander County Civic Center AV Upgrade Project, PWP number LA 2025-155, to replace all the audio/video equipment in the civic center. One, Absolute Audio Visual of Utah LLC, parent company of Nevada Absolute Audio Visual, in a total bid amount of $133,502.3 with a bid alternate of $8,500. So what's that mean with the bid alternate?
So the bid alternate is just for the package for them to come back and do warranty work or any maintenance on the, on the system. And that's $8,500. $90,000 of this is being funded by Nevada Gold Mines. So the county is, you know, I think out of pocket, the difference.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Nevada Gold Mines for the help. So if there's no questions on it.
I, he doesn't have a Nevada contractor's license or a Lander County business license?
I've not looked at that.
I was just looking through the required bid documents, and it says yes, and then it's crossed out, and then circled no, and then it has the 0080488 for the contractor's license number. Is he working under somebody else's if he doesn't have one? And no, he doesn't have a Lander County business license.
No, I believe this is, these are the, I would have to imagine they have a Nevada contractor's license because they do all the work for the mines. But we can, we can certainly verify all of that prior to, and then there are a lot of companies that come here and do work, and once they get here, they buy their, their business license.
Right, but that just, you know, it's like one of those things that is, we've really been, in the past, have really been hammered on, and.
You bet. We can, we can certainly verify all that and, and either bring this back or, or have that a motion contingent upon, however you guys would like us to proceed.
Okay, are there any other questions on this item? Okay, if not, I'll hear a motion contingent upon Commissioner Helming's concerns. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the bid award for the Lander County Civic Center Audio Video Upgrade, PWP NOLA 2025-155, to replace all audio/video equipment in the civic center. Absolute Audio Visual of Utah LLC, parent company, with a bid amount of $133,502.3 with a bid alternate of $8,500 contingent upon Commissioner Helming's concerns.
Okay, then a motion. Is there a second? Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We'll move to 1.6 for discussion and possible action for the first reading and setting to public hearing on March 27th, 2025 at 9:10 AM, the proposed ordinance number 2025-03, an ordinance replacing Lander County Code Title 12, Chapter 12.08, by repeal and amendment to clarify the prohibition against obstructing streets, provide for removal of abandoned or disabled vehicles, provide punishment for violations and other matters relating thereto. We're gonna go ahead and table this item at the moment. We just need to do some more work on that ordinance. Anybody have any questions about that?
No.
Okay. Pardon?
Okay.
Yeah, we're table.
I would like to, I would prefer discussion and direction.
Okay, so we're gonna table it, and we'll have discussion outside of the meeting. Just, we'll get clear on the ordinance before we actually address it. So we're gonna table the item.
Okay, how do I, the problem is that when it's not in public, I can't get direction from, certainly not from a majority of you.
Okay, so we're gonna be discussing it, we'll be discussing with our sheriff's department, with our county manager, and then once we have an ordinance that we feel is fit to basically vent to the public, then that's what we'll do. I'm talking, and then that's, and then that's what we'll do, Bill, so. And then you'll have all your chance at that particular time to express any concerns or anything about it. So my advice would be to work with our sheriff's department, with our county manager.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move to 1.7 for discussion and possible action for the first reading and setting for a public hearing on March 27th, 2025, 2025 at 9:15 AM, the proposed ordinance number 2025-02, amending Chapter 9.16 of the Lander County Code entitled Weapons concerning the prohibition of the discharge of firearms at night in Section 9.16.010, and to add an additional exception to the list provided in Section 9.16.020 to allow for the hunting of coyotes, bobcats, and badgers at night under certain conditions, including the use of night vision and thermal scopes, safe distance requirements, obtaining permission from property owners on private land, and compliance with all hunting regulations and other matters properly related thereto. So this is our first, we're actually setting for the first reading. So are there any questions on this? Have you guys seen the proposed ordinance?
I did have a couple calls from people that were protesting, and I don't know why they weren't at the meeting because everybody was so in support of it last time, that they did call me protesting it. And I, so I told them, I said, some of the people that I really expected to protest it were very supportive of it, and I don't know.
So basically, if you're reading through the ordinance, it just basically, it's, what we're changing is strictly adding the fact that you have to have the proper equipment, the proper distances to, to be able to hunt at night. And that's about basically the changes that are being made to the ordinance.
We requested a mile. We requested that be increased.
It's actually 2,000 yards, so slightly over a mile.
So Brian, basically what we did, the chief deputy DA cleaned up the previous ordinance that we had, as you can see, the red line versions that are attached to it. We added the modifications that was requested by Mr. Goodwin, and we changed the range from where he had a half to 2,000 yards, and then just kind of updated. And then it says that, yes, this can be allowed, but only if.
Okay.
Didn't we have some numbers given to us for optics, too?
Yes, please.
I'll just disclose before Daniel gets up here, he's a relative of mine. We're not, there's, since there's nothing that's gonna, I'm not gonna be abstaining from any discussion or, and or possible voting. Sorry, just to disclose. Daniel Goodwin for the record. Andrew Wobon for the record.
Sorry, say that again.
So we had some discussion about, I guess, quality of, of the units, and you gave some numbers, you know, this, that might be a precedence to say this is what you require versus a Walmart special.
Right, no, we did give numbers, and then it was decided later that in the, in the writing, instead of hard numbers, it would say with the ability to properly identify targets. So that should satisfy that requirement. Instead of just posting, instead of like putting out a hard number,
okay.
you just have to have the proper equipment to identify what you're, what you're looking at, is what we ended up going with.
Okay, so does the commission have any other questions on it?
I just have a comment too. Like with Dee, I had several calls, and it most, the main one was that it went to the people already, and it came back. So can you kind of explain to that why that's going?
So yeah, basically what you're addressing, or basically bringing up is the fact that we put it on the valid as an advisory question was to just ask for a consensus of Lander County taxpayers and how they felt about the issue. Now, that was done out of courtesy of this commission because this commission has the authority and direction to make those decisions, but we elected to put it back to the voters. But Mr., or Daniel brings up a good point when that, when you have things like that, they're not, not all sides are properly, it's like people aren't getting all the data, right? It's just kind of, it's kind of, they just read it and they associate, oh, guns at night is bad, don't vote. But I think, again, it's, Daniel wanted to bring it back. He agendaized the item because there's new commissioners on the board for us to hear it again, and that's what we're doing. And I wasn't at the last meeting, but you guys basically voted to move it into possibly doing an ordinance change, and that's where we're at today, so.
Okay, so can I ask one more question? So when, when we go to the public meeting for that, those people can come in and voice their opinion?
Absolutely, that's, that's the whole point of it, just a public hearing, so people can come and voice their concerns, both in favor and against.
Okay.
The last meeting had pretty good representation from both groups. I thought, I thought the discussion went really well, totally positive. I mean, we've all got calls, we're, you know, from both sides, and I think everybody's concerns and pros and cons have been heard, and, and it's actually really good.
And the first meeting that we had, when it was first presented, the agricultural side of things was against it, which in that last meeting, the agricultural, I mean, the same people were, were supportive of it because of the numbers and the, and the population explosion. So I think that changed.
Yeah, one of my oppositions that had called me was, was in agriculture as well, so. I got one more question. So when we're putting these items into this ordinance, I know we're having a certain amount of space from buildings, that's what we discussed. What about like on the agriculture, like they have different pumps and things out there? Is there a?
So it's basically, it reads as 2,000 yards from any structure.
Okay.
So that'd be, I would, I'd take anything that's basically occupied.
So it should be occupied, I mean.
Oh, occupied?
Yeah.
Pivots, things like that, that's, that's the question.
All right, most pivots, I believe, are on private property, right? So you have to have permission to hunt that stuff regardless, and if you do it without permission, you're already breaking a law.
But would you have to be that certain amount of space away from those?
No, what he's saying, no.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, because it's not. But what he's saying is to be able to hunt that anyway, you're gonna have to have permission from the landlord, so the people that are out there, law-abiding citizens, following the law. But the people that would go and do it anyways, which they would look whether there's a law in the books or not, that's the point. And that, that brings me back to, that's been my argument to this thing the whole time, is that all we're doing is penalizing, penalizing law-abiding citizens. Criminals will always be criminals, it doesn't matter what are on the books. I'm sure there's still gonna be people out there killing rabbits at night, but this ordinance doesn't allow for that. It doesn't say rabbits, right? It's coyotes, badgers, and whatever the third one was. So it's, again, it's just, it's our way of making sure that law-abiding citizens are protected under their constitutional Second Amendment rights. And we're putting things in this ordinance to further make sure that safety is inherent to with the equipment that has to be used and then the distance from structures. So are there any other questions? Okay, does the public have any questions on it? Yes?
Yeah, I'm here for.
Can you come up front and just state your name for the record? Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Dennis Course, I'm from Course Farms. I've talked to Tamara's, I've talked to Max Philippini, I've talked to Sean Mariluch, Jason Storm, and me, and we are the ones that are going to be affected by this. We do not want this, because it's not the guys that spend five thousand dollars on the night scopes. They're not a problem, it's the guy that goes and spends two hundred dollars on eBay and buys the cheapest thing they can find. Can't tell it's a coyote or a cat. Shoot it, they leave. We're out a lot of money. We do not allow hunting out in our valley anymore because of the disrespect of the hunters. And this is just allowing more people, like I said, it's not the Apex guys, they're being respectful. You're gonna open the door for anybody. And, you know, Tamara's, everybody else, they want coyotes gone during the day, that's fine. It's at nighttime, and they are opposed to this, because it is, we cannot be out there all the time. And I have, I've ran off hunters. Remember the story coming into Ed's, who was the people that were not nice, and I said, oh, that was me, because they were hunting on our property, and they asked, oh, hey, can we go out and shoot? And we said no, and they went around the other way, and they shot into the field, and yeah, I was a little angry, but you open the door to this, and it's just gonna happen at night now.
Well, let me ask you this, Dennis, first off, thank you for coming and your public comment. So have you, have you experienced any problems out there? I mean, obviously you have, because you basically said you ran them off, which that would bring me to my point, is that you, Tamara's, Mariluches, you're all concerned about private property, and it's, basically, as far as I know, it's against the law to hunt private property as it is. So I don't see how putting something on the books, and even clarifying that if you do hunt private property, you have to have the permission of. So if these people that are out there doing it now are gonna continue to do it regardless, they're gonna say,
oh, I didn't see that private property, no hunting, it was dark.
Yeah, so basically what we have here, we have further keys in this ordinance, that if it does happen at night, and then the call is made to the sheriff, they're gonna say, where's your permission from this landlord to be hunting their property? Oh, you don't have one, well, per ordinance this, we're gonna cite you. And then at this time, they're gonna look at the thing, it's like, what were you hunting with? Well, I don't see where you can properly identify your target with this Walmart special, there's another, you know, ordinance violation.
In answer to that, that is putting it, well, only the rich can hunt, so, you know, that's discriminatory, you know, that's saying only people with means can hunt.
Would you rather stop the ordinance to where it doesn't limit, and anybody could have that?
I would have the ordinance left the way it is, because we came here, oh, I don't, it was two years ago, it came up, and we all came and talked about it, and you guys put it down, and then it was put on the ballot, and it was put down. Why does it keep coming up? The public has spoken on this, that they don't want it. And I don't think we need to keep revisiting something that has clearly said that the public does not want from this being the third time. And I've only been out here one time, other, and that was the same thing. I mean, most of the time, lead us along, let us do our thing. And that's the only thing I've got against it. It's, I'm trying to get some sleep in the middle of the night, and I don't have time to run around, and none of us do. And the coyotes and the rabbits and stuff, they're very few on the B L M. They're all in the fields, hunting the mice, and hunting the rabbits on private property. That's where ninety-nine percent of where the coyotes are. I like coyotes, I have at least fifteen of them on my place right now, because they, they're great hunters. I don't love hunting. I don't, I'm not against hunting, have fun, guys, it's just too damn much work. But it's not that I'm opposed to hunting, it's just the they will not, like I said, at Apex and those guys, they would abide by the rules. It's the people that you open the door to that don't, that, whoa, no, I'm hunting it, they will use it as an excuse. And get, because Ron can't come out and do it in the middle of the night. By the time you call Ron, even out to Tamara's, they're gone, I mean, I'm taking miles from town, they'd really be gone. It's just, the local farmers and ranchers in agriculture are opposed to this. Storm has forty pivots, I've got twelve, I didn't have time to talk to farers, I could probably, you know, they would probably be opposed to it too. And that's that end of the valley, and Tamara's, Mariluch, and Philippini's is the closest. So it's, and they're cowboys, they want coyotes dead, and they're opposed to it, so that's all I wanna say.
Okay, thank you, Dennis, does anybody have any questions for Dennis?
Tamara's actually came in and spoke in support of it.
I talked, which one?
Paul and Dan. Dan. They stood up, both of them stood up here and testified that they supported it.
I talked to Dan, you know, Paul yesterday, and he said, no, I do not want this. I.
They were on record.
They were on record supporting it.
I don't know what to tell you, I talked to Paul yesterday.
Yeah, well.
And.
Because I was surprised at some of the people that were so supportive of it.
I as well, because I was in the first meeting when it came up, when I first started.
Yeah, and I, that was, you know, everybody, there wasn't, there was not a single person that stood up and spoke against it. Everybody spoke for it.
I talked to Paul yesterday, that's the only reason I knew about this meeting, on this agenda, that's the only reason I knew about it.
All right, well, thank you, Dennis, I think we got to point, thank you for your comment. Is there any other public comment on the issue? Okay. Yes.
I think the discussion is exactly this, because like I said, we were at the meeting, it was in support. I don't think the, either of the sides are, I think one side's been representative in here, I think I seen, I felt support as well. Are we ready for a motion?
Yes, I'm ready for a motion.
I motion to approve an action for the first reading and setting of the public hearings on March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five at nine fifteen A M for the proposed ordinance number twenty-two five dash oh two, amending Chapter nine six point one six of the Lander County Code entitled Weapons Concerning the Prohibition of the Discharge of Firearms at Night in Section nine point one six point zero one zero. This'll add an additional exception to the list provided in Section nine point one six zero two zero to allow the hunting of coyotes, bobcats, badgers at night under certain conditions, including the use of night vision and thermal scopes, safe distance requirements, obtaining permission from property owners on private land, and compliance with all hunting regulations and other matters properly related thereto.
Okay, so there we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and I'd like to make sure that everybody understands we're not approving this ordinance at this particular time, we're just approving the public hearing, which we invite everybody back that has concerns for it, or against it, and we'll be discussing it in that meeting before we actually either approve or deny the ordinance change. So with that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, we'll move to one point eight, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, providing compensation to members who are not elected public officers for the following boards. One, Board of Equalization, a hundred and twenty-five dollar stipend a day to be adopted by resolution. Two, Debt Management Commission, forty dollar stipend a day, not to exceed four hundred dollars per month. And Three, Planning Commission, eighty dollars per meeting, not to exceed four hundred dollars per month. So this is a great idea, when I've seen that, I was like, why haven't we been doing this? It's like, we want to encourage participation on our boards, and it's like, it's putting some exchange in with our citizens to help us in areas on these advisory boards, I just think this is something, it's a great idea, so.
I just wanted to address your backup, you put all the backup in there, because the G F D D A did do all of the research as to why we couldn't add all the boards, and there's inter-racial stipulations.
Yeah, I seen that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would really like to thank Mike, wherever he is, because he, you know, we dropped all this on his desk, and there is a lot to who you can and can't pay, and how much, and where that falls, and we wanted to include all of our boards, but pursuant to N R S, these are the ones that we can, and they're the boards that are required by N R S for us to have. So I think it's only appropriate that we compensate them somehow. Currently, they're taking a lot of, a lot of public meetings and not getting any rewards, so kind of encourages maybe a few people to step up to them and kind of reward the ones that are already there.
And this does, this doesn't take out like the mileage for Miranda driving up for planning?
No, mileage reimbursement's always been there.
Okay.
And if you guys do go forward and approve this, then we will bring back the resolutions for the Board of Equalization one.
Okay, do the commissioners have any questions on this item?
No.
No, I think it's a great idea, I mean, it's especially retaining board members, I mean, we need all the help we can get on all these boards, so.
Okay, thank you. Does the public have any comments on it? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
We'll make a motion that we approve providing compensation to members who are not elected public officers for the following boards. Number one, Board of Equalization, a hundred and twenty-five dollar stipend a day to be adopted by resolution. Number two, Debt Management Commission, forty dollars a day stipend a day, not to exceed four hundred dollars per month. And number three, Planning Commission, eighty dollars per meeting, not to exceed four hundred dollars per month.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We'll move into correspondence, correspondence reports, future agenda items. Commissioners have anything on this, we have any future agenda items we'd like to see?
We need to put back on there for the shortwave radio thing, remember we put it up there at the radio tower, and it was supposed to go at the airport? The, not shortwave.
The ham radio?
The ham radio thing. So, because they need to have a spot there at the airport, so that they can, we gotta do that before June, so that when they do the Pony Express Run, they.
Now, is this something that we need to bring before the airport board, or is this something?
No, our board has approved it already.
Oh, they have, okay.
Remember, I sent you the email on it, and you put it on the radio towers, and it should also include at the Austin Airport.
I apologize, I did not follow up on that one. Okay, is there anything further on correspondence reports or future agenda items? Okay, hearing done, I'll move to public comment for non-agenda items only, is there public comment? Okay, hearing done, here a motion for a hearing.
Motion for a hearing.
Second?
All second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries. Thanks, everybody.